Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. Glad everybody got by the train, okay? Consider a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda? Consider a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We'll have our opportunity for public comment and before we, I'm going to preface that with, when we get down to item two on the agenda with the public input policy, I am going to take public input on that. So that would not be something for this public comment, if that makes sense. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to come up and speak to any items not on the agenda today? All right, if not, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Are there any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, I had the opportunity yesterday to travel to Mitchell to visit with the FAA concerning our airport. I thought it was very worthwhile and hopefully that in the upcoming weeks, we'll have some things on our agenda that will shed some light on some good things happening. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other commissioners have reports?
No.
All right, if not, we're going to move on to regular business on our public hearing, item one on the agenda.
It's a public hearing to occur, to consider the adoption of a resolution of intent to enter into a lease for a term exceeding 120 days and an amount exceeding $500. The subject area is known as lease site P1, a tract 4,680 square feet located at the Lincoln County Marvsky Airport. The proposed leaseee is Airplanes To Go LLC.
Thank you.
This is a, one entity transferring over the lease to, or actually the lease to the property for the county to another entity. So the first document would be the original owner going ahead and giving up their current lease. The other lease is going to be for assuming the site P1 lease, which is our, has three five-year periods left. And so this is just a standard transfer of the lease from one entity to another.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for staff? All right, if not, anybody here to speak as a proponent of the adoption of the resolution? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, if not, I'd consider a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair, to approve the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, we're going to go, I, it was, Mr. Golden and I drafted a new public input policy and I know that it needs to be tweaked. I've got some good comments from Betty Otten and so, first thing I'm going to do is just ask if there's anybody in the audience that wants to come up and give us their input on what we have as drafted and then I'm going to ask for a motion to table this so we can work through a few things on it after we hear from the public. You want to come on up, Chad?
Good morning, Commissioner. Chad Skiles, 820 North Dakota in Canton. I was pleased to see this on the agenda, especially after last week's meeting when I went home and I proceeded to watch the Minnehaha County Commission meeting and saw them doing pretty much the same thing. And I thought, well, there's some good, there's some good things in there. I'm appreciative of, the biggest thing for me as far as appreciative of is opening up all agenda items to the public. I've always said and always been a huge believer in the fact that it's crucial for the public to be able to interact with our elected officials on any and all topics. So I really, really appreciate that, that you're opening that up so that the citizens, the public, can give their input. A couple of concerning things that I'm going to, going to just ask you to look at. One is the time limit. I noticed that it was going to be three minutes, I believe, for both agenda items and then just the general public input. I am asking that you bump that back to five minutes. I think five minutes is, is a reasonable amount of time to allow the, the public and the citizens to be heard and-
Chad, are you just, are you talking on the, on the regular agenda items or the general public comment?
I believe I saw that it was three minutes on, or had, was being proposed to be changed to three on both of them, if I remember correctly.
Right, so, but you're just asking on the agenda items to make it five?
I'm, I'm actually asking for both, but I would prefer to see it on the regular agenda items at five, general public at three, if we're going to compromise-
Sure.
-just because the regular agenda items are dealing with a specific item, which maybe citizens or the public do have some very strong viewpoints, either in support or opposition of it. Okay?
All right.
And then my last thing, my last comment is just, I would appreciate if you kept the general public input at the beginning of the meeting instead of the end of the meeting. And I know that's been a huge controversial thing. I've seen the Sioux Falls City Council go through that. Now I'm, last week I saw the Minnehaha County Commission going through that thing and now we're potentially looking at that. I, I just think it's important to keep it at the beginning because not everyone has the luxury of a flexible work schedule or things like that to be able to be at every single commission meeting and if they do come to talk on one specific topic or they have one thing, they don't necessarily have the time, if it ends up being a really long meeting with executive sessions, to stay here for two or three hours so that they can get up and give three or five minutes of input. And so I would appreciate that you would look at that as well. And I had one more thing and it's escaping me now, of course, but if I think of it, I will let you know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. Anybody else want to come up and give their input on this item? All right. Well, I, I know, I want to work through the email that I got from Betty and I haven't had a chance to do that yet, as well as the comments made by Chad. So if, if it's all right with everybody, what I'd like to do is table this so I can work through it some more with council before we consider it. Thoughts, comments?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got no objection to tabling. I'll just give you my input here in public. A few years ago, the state of Texas went through this issue and Texas Legislature passed a law that said all subordinate units to government are required to allow public input on each agenda item as they occur. And there was a lot of uproar, there was a lot of opposition from the county commissions and the city councils about, oh, this is going to extend the meeting times by two or three times and none of that materialized. Instead, what it resulted in is kind of a formalized process where as each agenda item comes up, you know, let's say for example, approved renewal quote with Jensen Insurance. Well, in Texas, the law is now, is that at these public meetings, the public can come up and make a comment on each agenda item. And, you know, at first, there was a lot of concern, oh, that's, you know, that's crazy, that's going to take forever. It ends up, most of the time, public never came in and made the comments anyway. But what it did is it created a formalized process where people could just give their input on each agenda item. And then what it did is they compressed the general public opportunity comment period at the beginning of each meeting. So let's say somebody at the beginning of each meeting wants to come in and say, hey, we're the, from the 4H Club and we're doing an event this weekend. Great. It's kind of like that public opportunity comment at the beginning of each meeting is kind of like your public bulletin board, right? Those are generalized comments where people can come in and say, hey, county commission, here's what's going on. So what I would like to see is we shorten the amount of time for public comment periods at the beginning, but only if there was an agreement to allow public comment on each individual agenda item. And it's not as if old Aaron's is making this up. The entire state of Texas, you know, the legislature, the governor, they approved this thing, one of the biggest states in the country. And apparently, there's been no issues down there. So what I would suggest is we compress the amount of time for public input at the beginning, but then we allow public input on each agenda item as they come up. Now, the whole five minutes, I don't know about that. We could squeeze it down to three minutes, probably. That's with regard to each agenda item input. Then that way, everybody says they got to say their piece, they got to talk about every issue. My guess is, nobody will come in with 90% of these issues and say a darn thing. But it's always the hot button, hot topic issues that people want to be heard on. And, you know, sometimes those issues are on our agenda, other times they're not. And for the times that they're not, they can come in at the beginning of the meeting, say their piece and be done with it. For the other issues, when they are on our agenda, everybody will get a little three minutes to speak on each agenda item and, you know, and then you can kind of tailor it from there. So those are my thoughts, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Commissioner Aaron's, how, how long have they had this in place in Texas?
Oh, I think it's been three or four years now. I'd have to go back and look at the statute. I know that I talked about this process about a year and a half ago here in front of the commission. We briefly discussed it. I pulled the statute up. So it's been in place for a while now.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, if we were time sensitive, I think we would put a limit on the amount of time a commissioner could speak on the topic as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Poppins. All right, anybody else? Commissioner Schmidt, you got any two cents on that?
Not at this time.
All right, can I get a motion to table item two, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. And then, can we put this on the next agenda? Thanks. All right, move on to item three on our agenda?
We're going to vote on this motion?
Yeah, we better vote.
Okay. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to the next item. Who are we hearing from on that?
You heard the information from Jensen Agency last week regarding the renewal. The estimated renewal quote is 233,472. I just need approval to renew the quote or renew the insurance.
All right, we've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
To approve, Madam Chair.
Okay, I've got a motion by Aaron's, a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Any discussion?
Chair, I'll be abstaining. Thank you.
All right. Sean, you want to go ahead and call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, next item.
So, I don't know, a few months ago, we went through and we signed up for the opioid settlement agreement. We've gotten the agreement back. Lincoln County is going to get $6,507.37 to the county to help with opioid problems. They're asking us to sign the MOA regarding it. I've done some research. There are some facilities that would be able to benefit from that within Lincoln County, such as the Link, Tallgrass Recovery Keystone. The sheriff's office might be able to use some of it. So I'm just asking for you to sign the memorandum of agreement and it has been vetted through legal.
Thank you.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item five on our agenda. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning.
Looks like you need a replacement vehicle for one that got totaled.
Right, and, and the good news, if there is any on this, we had a 2019 Dodge Durango that was totaled on the 29th in a car crash, 29th of July. The insurance settlement was $34,676. Chevy out of Des Moines, Iowa called me. They have a vehicle, they've got a vehicle in that somebody ordered that didn't take it. It's a 2023 Chevy Tahoe for $41,382, which is the Iowa state bid. I'm asking, I'm just informing you about the insurance that went back into the general fund. Asking to purchase this vehicle, we can fit it in this year's budget, but to replace a 2019 with 122,000 for $7,000 seems like not a bad deal for the Lincoln County.
Right. Anybody have any questions for the sheriff?
And we're allowed off of the Iowa bin purchase? I would so move to authorize.
Thank you for that. Is there a second? Was that you, Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, I got a second from Schmidt. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. And then, was Terry coming in?
Uh, this-
Or what are we doing for that?
This was advertised for 9:30, correct?
Okay. Bill, do we have any exec sessions? Can we maybe have one on employment matters? Okay, I would like to have an executive session for, to go STCL 125-2/4 and also STCL 125/2, or 2/1. Can I get a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion, but I'd also like to include sub three-
Okay.
-and I can raise that issue when we're in the room there.
Okay, sounds good.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Was that second by Aaron's?
Yes.
We have Schmidt back on? Go ahead, Sean.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Carter, do we have Schmidt on, on the line? Commissioner Schmidt, can you hear us? Commissioner Landy?
Yes. She carries. All right, we've got our public hearing. A public meeting, I should say, for the five-year plan. Terry, you want to come up?
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, so we're at this time, now, do you all have this up on your computers? Or do you want a paper copy in front of you to look through?
Do you have a paper? Do you have a paper?
I do. It was part of the agenda packet, so. So hopefully you've had an opportunity prior to this, to look through this, to see the upcoming projects that are planned out for the next five years. Again, this is going to be road, specifically more so bridges, but as far as road projects that we're going to be having in our plan. Again, this is Lincoln County's 2023 to 2027 highway and bridge improvement plan. So what I'm going to do is, the presentation I'm going to go through is, I'm going to work through by fiscal year. Again, it's going to be up here on the map. It's going to show projects. I'll go through each one of them and then maybe at the end of each one, I'll, I'll open it up to see if you have any questions for that specific year. So starting with 2023, again, first project we have is a full-dep reclamation. This is on 152, from 117 to Hudson. This is 15 and a half miles. It's the number two project on the line down there you see. Again, we're doing some mill work. We're going to be doing an FDR full-dep reclamation and we're going to be some base stabilization and we're putting a three to three and a half inch mat on top of this. The next project is a box culvert and you see, there's a little pink box on County Road 152 at the bottom down there. That is a structure we are replacing. That is going to be in coordination with, well, we're doing that structure plus we're doing 42110253, which is a cost share with Pleasant Township. That is a structure that last year, we had all the issues with the pipeline, the crossing. We ended up closing that structure because there was some significant damage done to it, so. The other project we have for next year is going to be the number one, I'll go to asphalt treatment, reseal. So the light pink lines, that's our reseal or chip seal project for next year. That's going to be County Road 135 from 269 down to Canton. And we're going to do in County Road 140 from I-29 to Lincoln County 143 down by Fairview. Also, we're going to be doing the shop parking lot. That has not had a, had a seal on it since we laid that mat down back in 17. The structures we have, so number one on this list, it's 42020201. That's supposed to be a preservation project. So we were awarded this project back in 2020, I believe. And we went to bid with that earlier this summer and the, the prices on that were way, way out of, way out of sort. And I think we, we, if you recall here, maybe a month or two, we rejected those bids. But we're going to be reapplying for a preservation January 1 of this coming year. So hopefully that project will be awarded the difference in that cost and we'll be able to afford to do that project next year, hopefully. Again, going down the next one, it's 42110253. That's number two. And then the last one, we are doing next year, it's 42148050. That is east of Harrisburg. That is the Lake Alvin Bridge. And again, we awarded that project about a month, month and a half ago as well, so. Any questions on 23's projects? None? All right. 2024. All right, so in 2024, first project I'm going to have on there, we're going to do some surfacing, mill and overlay. This is from, on County Road 110, from 111 to 115. It's about five miles. 111, County Road 111 to 268. Let me see here, where is that at? 268 to 271. So this is the stretch north of T. And then the other section is 117 from 110 to 106, that two-mile stretch in front of the new school there. Okay, these are prospective projects for 2024. Micro-surfacing, we're looking to do 102, which from South Dakota 11 over to 135. County Road 106 from I-29 over to 135. And Cliff Avenue, County Road 123 from 270th to 272 estimation, so. So in '24, we should be having some bridge, federal bridge replacements should be happening. Number one on there, this is west of T, west of Old Highway 17 there, 42007040. That's a bridge replacement. The next one is a number two, if you go about straight south there, near the bottom of the page there. It's 42011210 and 42012210. If you recall, it's, it's been several years since we've heard anything on this. This is the one we called the Junkie Bridge. It was a double set of bridges. We were awarded a federal bridge grant on this back in 2020. Next structure we have on the federal bridge replacement is 42050287 and this is on County Road 111. It's about a half mile north of Highway 46. Again, those are federal bridge replacements, so, so the county ones that we're going to be doing next year, these are in '24, these are prospective projects, again, 42160227 and 4217234. Now, as you see on there, we're hoping to do some cost shares with some townships on these structures. As we've been doing in the past with the, the last couple of years, we've been getting, we've been able to accomplish that. So that's going to have to be some conversations we are going to have to have with townships to hopefully they would see the benefit of replacing structures, so. Any questions on 2024? Yes, sir?
What percentage is the cost share when you address the townships? It varies.
Yes, so, so what we've been doing is a 20% and then up to X amount of dollars. So I think the one we did with Dayton Township was up to 100,000 and the one with Pleasant Township for next year's structure is up to 50,000.
And that number four, that's on 281st Street? Is that one I haven't seen at all? That's on 480?
Yeah.
Oh, that's on 480?
Yep.
North and south?
Yep.
Gotcha.
So.
Or by Albertson's?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions on 2024? Yes?
Go ahead.
Do recent negotiations with the municipality of T affect from 26 north at all?
Yes, it will. So again, I just put this on the list because this is, we had it in the plan before for this year. So yeah, it, it could have an effect on that, on those negotiations, so. Any other questions? All right, moving on to 2025. 2025, so first item on there is we're looking at doing on Lincoln County 105 and, oop, that should be Lincoln County 116, not 106, at 276th and 466th Avenue there. So this is the, the Lennox Corner at the Klondike Road, as we all call it. I have, we're planning to do a turn lane project there. At the very least, we, we do put in right turn lanes for northbound traffic. But again, I think I have it in 20, it might be next year's plan to do a study on this. We're doing an intersection study on this to determine turn lanes on that, so. So 2025, we're hoping to build it. I know cost estimates, I think, are around 800,000. So you have a question, sir?
Go ahead.
Can we investigate the possibility of a turnaround?
I said investigate.
I didn't say we do it.
We, we can. The only, the only thing- We, we can. The only, the only thing, yeah, we can, we can look into it. I mean, it would definitely slow down traffic on that corridor, at least for a ways.
Slow down to the south, keep traffic moving. It has been a very successful on Louise Avenue, and if we're spending that kind of money, maybe it needs to have a serious look.
We, we can look at that once we get the study back.
Very good.
And so, the next project I have on there is micro-surfacing on County Road 105, and this is going from the north county line up at the Minnehaw County Line, 268th Street, down to Lennox. We're doing 106 from T to 464th, the west, west side of T, and then 116 from 105 to 464, two miles there. As you see that, that's in the green, a light green on the top corner. Bridge replacements we have in '25, it's going to be 42120283. This one is about three quarters of a mile north of Highway 46 on County Road 125. Again, we're hoping to get a, we're doing P preliminary engineering next year on this structure. So again, when, probably in '23, '24, we'll be applying for a build grant on this structure. Number two is 42244255. Again, next year, we're going to be applying for a preservation grant on that. That is the, the bridge east of Hudson that crosses the Big Sioux River. The last couple inspection cycles, we've had some pretty significant changes in that structure, and we got some, we need to figure out what's going on with that. We got some concrete breaking away underneath. So, again, applying for a preservation grant next year. So, any questions on 2025?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Terry, I see you've got $100,000 put in the budget for review of the master transportation plan in 2025.
Yep.
So, our, the planning and zoning is going to redo its comprehensive plan. We, we put money in the budget this year for next year.
Okay.
'23, where they're going to start doing their updating the comprehensive plan. Obviously, I would think you guys would want to be involved in that process, right, in terms of planning road intersections and things like that?
So, I, I mean, I mean, we, I mean, I would hope that maybe I can be part of that, the comprehensive. I know that's more on the planning side, but yeah, it has to do with roads as well. I know I'd have to talk with Toby about that.
Well, yeah, so I'm wondering if we could all get together and talk about that and try to find out if we're going to do the comprehensive plan, maybe it makes sense to also start talking about doing the, you know, reviewing or renewing the transportation plan either at the same time or shortly thereafter to see how those two connect with each other, so we could have more of a comprehensive plan and it's not, you know, disjointed.
So I'll, I'll say this, for 2023, that, you know, the amount of money that it could take for the transportation plan would not work into my budget because most of my funding is going to be towards that 152 project, the, the big project we have next year.
Sure.
It's possible I could, I could move it up to '24, you know, and see what, what funding is like. We could probably do it in '24 if, if we. So that'd just be a year after his comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and my guess is it'll take, it could take a year plus to do the comprehensive plan process.
Yep.
If we can merge those two.
So we, maybe we'd be right on the, the coattails of doing, you know, beginning that one in '24 possibly. So.
Thank you.
The bridge preservation by Hudson now, is, is that adjacent with the state of Iowa? Or is that nothing to do with them?
That's Sioux County, Iowa.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions on 2025? All right. 2026. All right, 2026, we've got surfacing, mill overlay. Again, some of these projects, you don't know if it's going to be both mill and overlay or just an overlay, but we're going to be doing County Road 117, and this is going to be from 18 to 46. We're going to be doing Lincoln County 124 between 115 and I-29. That's through Worthing. And then we're going to be doing 124 from 44 to the county line on the west end. This will be on the south side of Lennox over there. '26 also, we're going to be doing from I-29 to the county line, to Turner County Line going west, County Road 140. We're looking at doing full depth reclamation on that and base stabilization. That project is just going to be FDR and stabilization. We're going to leave it gravel for a year, and I believe in '27, I have the, the county with our forces, we're going to pave it with our forces. So. Bridge projects for '26, 42128158. This is on County Road 125. This is at number one in the center of the screen. This is about a mile and three quarters south of Highway 18. So, we're calling this one Lake Alvin Jr. because we're having deck issues on that one, the same thing where we paved over top of the deck, and the, the concrete decking is, is spalling severely. So this is one, again, we're going to be applying for a build grant. So hopefully in '26, we'll, we'll get the build grant to replace the structure. Local, local money is going to be on 42152170. That is on County Road 134, just east of Highway 11, basically, and then 42166150. That is on a township road just north and east of that structure, the one, the first structure. Basically on those, we need to replace deck units. We got some, some issues with deck units on both of those. Again, that's something we're going to plan to do with county funds, so local funding. So. Any questions in 2026? Nope. All right. 2027. 2027, so first item is reseal, asphalt surface treatment. This is going to be on the segment that we are replacing this year. This is going to go from basically I-29 to Hudson is what we're going to do. And in paving for, for 2027, we're looking at, again, 140 from I-29 going west. And again, I believe we're going to, we're going to focus on that using county forces to pave that ourselves. So. And then also in '27, the big one is going to be County Road 143. This is the ethanol plant road going south of 152 down there by Hudson. This is going to be a big project. We're looking at full reconstruction, hoping to get some grant money. We're hoping to have some engineering done on this. We're, we're in the process of doing some preliminary engineering now and in next year. So hopefully by September of next year, we may try to, try to apply for some of the federal funds that are out there, the grants, to get that. So. Bridge replacements, 42200226 and 42200249, both of those are on County Road 139. That's a gravel, county gravel road. And again, we're going to be applying for build grants on those. Again, if you recall, those are two structures that we were just awarded preliminary engineering grants this year. So, those grant, those engineering will start on those over the next year. So. Any questions on 2027?
Did we, you're working on the engineering for 143 now? Have we already started doing that, or is that?
No, we're just doing preliminary, we're doing preliminary engineering. We're trying to get engineering done to the point where we can apply for some of that federal money that's out there. And, and when it comes to it, we, we, I mean, it would probably be my recommendation to hire a grant writer to do that for us, to try to get some of those funding, some of those funds. So.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
All right, that's all I've got in the plan. So, I will refer you to, let me see here. It's going to be page. In the plan, it's going to be page 11, I believe. 11, 12, 13. Those three pages. So, that is the, the sufficiency rating report that we get after our inspections that are done. As you see at the top, it says it's 2020 Bridge Sufficiency Rating Table. Yeah, this item comes from the DOT, and I am still waiting on the DOT for the new updated one. We had inspections done this year, but I have not received the new sufficiency rating report from them. So, once I receive that, and I'm hoping I get it prior to the 14th next week, so I can, then we'll insert that in the plan. Again, that does nothing to change the plan. All it is, is a supporting document stating what the rating is on each structure. So. Any other questions on the plan? So what I'm looking for is approval to, to have the chair execute the, that you're approving this plan so we can move forward and get it submitted to the DOT so we will be eligible for bridge improvement grant funding.
Anybody have any final questions or comments?
I have several questions, but I would offer the motion because we do need to get this going to approve this five-year plan to submit it.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion.
Thanks, Terry, for this report. Can you start to give the board some idea in light of the new pricing that we're seeing for bridges? I know we turned down at least one, if not two, this year. So we can start to contemplate what we're going to have to do with funding for, because these are things that need to get done, and we need to be prepared to have the funding in place to get this in place. So, when can we maybe get a report from you, how much you would think your budget will need to grow?
Because of the, adjust, to adjust to real-time costs.
The increase cost, yeah. Because I don't want to.
I can give you all kinds of examples of what's been going on out there, projects that have been bid. We just met with I-Me yesterday about another project, and they were telling us that Yankton County just bid a, a bridge over the James River. And I think they were, cost estimate of $4 million, and they came in at six and a half. I mean, and again, that was a big grant that they're awarded on that, you know, so these, these costs are, I, I don't know when it's going to end. Hopefully, I don't know, a year, two, you know? I mean, so we're probably seeing, like on the big, our Alvin grant that we got, you know, that was about $100,000 over engineer's estimate, but I had budgeted, you know, a little extra. So we're, we're good on that one. But, I mean, I think we're seeing a 20% increase easily. You know?
So we're going to need to make those kind of adjustments or make the public aware that projects will get pushed farther and farther back.
You'll do less and less on projects. So.
Second question I have, Madam Chair, is, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm really not seeing anything in this that pertains to the 85th Street project in particular, because there are some issues that we're going to need to address in the next five to 10 years up in that because of the 85th Street, in my belief, because traffic patterns will significantly change up there. And I would like us to start talking about that, as well as a disconnect on 110, if this, when the state finally does do that interchange. There's three miles of disconnect over to Highway 17 that has high traffic volumes already, and I'm concerned that those numbers will just extremely skyrocket. That area is currently undeveloped, and if we're looking at if the board would think it's pertinent to have that connection, we should start to talk about that. So.
So, I'll go back to the 85th Street interchange. I'm assuming you're talking, it's not in my plan because that's not funding that's going to come out of my budget. I guess, you know, I know we had talked about, we met with the DOT about.
Those are township roads, but we, as a board, we should be talking about traffic patterns and the effect, in my belief, of what that interchange with the board is supporting.
Sure. So we, we, you know, we are in the middle of a corridor study on County Road 106, and there has been discussion with City Harrisburg and the city's Uvalns, and their concern is north-south corridors going to the city, you know? So, we're looking Western Avenue, southeastern. They said Sycamore is a ways out, but mainly those two, Tallgrass, you know, but Tallgrass is going to be out of our realm, at least north of, you know, South Veterans Parkway. When that comes in, that's going to be all city. So, do we have things that neither are going to be coming up for township roads? Yes, we are. And that's, again, that's a conversation that I think we, as a board or a committee, we need to get together. We need to decide what we're going to do with the high traffic counts on some of these township roads.
Yeah, cooperatively with townships or whoever, cities, whoever's in closest proximity because it affects all of us.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, I guess if we can, if, if we can delete more of our roadways that we currently have and, and, you know, give them to the cities, to the municipalities that are, that are growing, you know, then it'd be, we would be able to possibly take on additional miles of some of those township roads. But then the big thing is looking at how are we going to construct what needs to be there, a paved road, you know, how, how much are we going to spend doing that, you know, prior to that? If we, if we develop those township roads into a paved road, that's just going to explode the development on them, and that's just going to quicken when municipalities, whoa, grow up to them. So.
The two that I speak of have significant impact changing. One, the interchange doesn't even exist on 85th Street currently, so that's going to be a significant change to that area. And may, the, the area may fill in with the municipalities, but I think we should have that conversation. And then with the potential of the interchange at Harrisburg exit 71, that'll make a significant impact, I think, to, to traffic patterns in that area too. So.
Yeah, and like I said, there, there, that's an ongoing study as well that, for that interchange for at 71, exit 71.
Terry, for about the last three months, I've been meeting with folks in Harrisburg. We've got a group of people. School district is involved, the city is involved. I've been going to the meetings, their chamber of commerce is, and we've been doing meetings to try to figure out what can be done to do corridor widening on Highway 110. And, you know, they've all thankfully come to the conclusion, the county won't be able to support that. And so, this group essentially is trying to do, I think, what the city of T did, what, 10, 12 years ago with regard to connecting. They're trying to do the same thing with regard to 110. And the reason I bring it up is because there's been some discussions recently, I think the meeting I was at two weeks ago. The city is willing to take over some, more county highways. That's good for us financially, and then hopefully they would gain some flexibility with regard to, you know, driveways and stuff like that, access permits. So, there is some discussions going on out there about that, and I think they were going to try to start looping you into those meetings as well, just to let you know what's going on.
I've already had a conversation with a representative from the city of Harrisburg on that very topic, and I know the proposal that he came up with is, or similar to, is they would take over those three miles or three and a half miles, whatever it is. Initially, they, they wanted the funding that was with, the first three and a half miles we did of them, and I was like, there's no money. Then his option is, we'll take over all of it, you know, but you have to maintain it for 20 years, you know? And I, and I'm like, well, I mean, I, I guess that's a point we can start to discuss, but I, like I said, that would be, you know, that'd be up to you guys if that's what you would want to do.
Yeah, they threw a couple ideas out to me as well. I, at least, the good part about it is they're willing to sit down and have a discussion about it.
Correct. Yep.
Think creatively about how to do it.
Yep. Any other questions? So I will say that, you know, this is a, a public meeting, so I would, I would ask that you take anybody from the audience that, that would have any input, so we can put those comments in the plan. So, if you've got nothing else, I will let anybody from the public come up.
Sure, we do have a motion and a second on the table, but we will allow for public input. So if you want to come on up, please do so now. Don't everybody jump up at once. Can you just state your name and address, please?
Tim Burns, and it's 27063 Sycamore Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I'm Springdale Township Supervisor. And I have kind of a question on southeastern, they're building a school right south of the roundabout on 85th. Is there a plan for that gravel road south that they're building on?
Come on up, Terry.
So, so to answer that, uh, county plan, no. Uh, city of Sioux Falls, yes, I believe so, uh, because I think the city of Sioux Falls is going to service that. So I, I believe that they're going to be, be taking care of that. How far south are they going to go? I don't, that I don't not know, so.
But if the traffic is on that, it's township's problem that's created by that.
Uh, for now.
Going south on that, yeah.
Yeah, for now, probably. And again, you know, that's, that's one of those corridors that, that probably need, need to be addressed at some point. Um, but I, I think that, you know, entities need to get together and, and try to find a solution, you know, for this, you know? I mean, maybe, maybe it's a cost share project between Sioux Falls County Township, so, to get something done.
You have 800 vehicles on that and we put counts on that and it's like double that.
Yeah, I think there was like 800 like two or three years ago.
Yeah, yeah, now we've done counts and it's double that, so.
Yeah, so definitely within the realm of, of having a paved road, but, so.
Other questions, comments? Please, yep, please come on up.
Eric Ennible, 47788, 289th Street. Um, I'm here, uh, my interest in this is for the township, uh, for funding for the REIF, uh, five-year plan. And I'm looking through some of the funding here and it looks like for like 2024, Lincoln County gets around 479,000. And then if you divide that by all the townships, uh, that, that doesn't leave a lot of money. It's like 30 grand, uh, if you divided it equally. And I'd, our township would like to make use of the opportunity for this funding to replace, uh, or at least fix some of these really old box culverts that's been there for years and they're really eroded. So I guess my question is, uh, I've heard, I've heard some townships, uh, say, well, there's really not a lot of money there and they're not even going to bother, uh, with applying for grants or whatever, so. My question is if, uh, is, is, uh, that funding, will more be available if only, only the certain ones, uh, decide they want to make use of that? Uh, then it would, you know, then it would really be worth a while. We have one or two box culverts that could be repaired or whatever, but, you know, the cost might be up there, you know, pushing to 200,000 or so, so 30,000 wouldn't go very far. But if, uh, if there was, you know, a distribution of funding that would make it worthwhile, that would be great, so. I, I guess my question is, is, is how linear is the funding for, for every township?
Uh, you want to come up, Terry? How does that get distributed?
All that money will be distributed via grants, um, that have to be submitted to the county. Um, so you're correct, um, the, the amount that we received this year was 479,000 and some, and, and so that is the funding from '22 this year, uh, from the initial $6 million or, you know, $3 million the first year for inventory, $3 million the next year, and that got dispersed, um, on a, on a formula for how many structures your, your county had. Um, the additional money on that is funding for '23, I believe, that the state has already put out. So they have this going out, um, I believe it's funded through '26, through '26? You know, so, so my guess is, uh, if the monies are getting spent, and, and again, this, this state will do audits every year, I'm sure, to, to see how much of those funds are left, and if the money's getting spent, I'm assuming that they would continue the program if there's, if there's state dollars available to do so, so. Uh, but again, you know, so if I only have two townships that ever apply for grants this year and next year and the year after, then you guys are getting grants. I mean, if the others don't want the money, I mean, that's, that's on them, so, I mean. But, all right?
Terry, what did you say? You only had two, what, two townships, so what?
No, I'm saying if I only had two townships that applied for grants.
Mm-hmm.
You know, this year and next year and the year, I mean, those are the two townships that are going to get the money, if there, there's money there.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yep.
So.
Thank you.
Terry, what's the cost split on that again? I, I know we talked about it before, but.
It's going to be an 80/20 split. Yep, so, so the township would apply for a grant, um, they would get pay the 20%, and then this fund would take 80%.
Okay.
So.
So the maximum ceiling of their project is whatever 20% they're willing to put in, is that how that works?
Yeah, so, so if it's a hundred thousand dollar project, they pay 20%. If it's a four hundred thousand dollar project, they're paying 20%.
Yep, okay.
As long as, as long as, you know, and again, uh, that is something that I had, uh, Commissioner Gibbon and Commissioner Schmidt are on, on the, this committee, the review committee for these applications, you know, and then we'll go through these and make a recommendation to the full board on who to award and the amounts to award, you know, so. And again, uh, just as an FYI for any townships that they're listening, uh, deadline for applications this year is October 31st, so. Um, we'll be sending out a reminder email for you as well, so don't forget. Any other questions?
Thanks, Terry. Anybody else want to come up, have questions or input? All right, if not, I'm going to close the discussion on it and ask Sean to call a roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
Motion carries. I consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
No, I would ask you to go back into executive.
Back it, yeah.
Okay. Getting a directive, what subdivision there, Bill?
Uh, subdivision 3.
All right, under STCL 125, 2 sub 3.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes.
All right. Out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Uh, do we have Commissioner Schmidt?
I don't believe so.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes, and then I'll motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We're adjourned, have a great week, everybody.